All right, good afternoon, everyone. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the point in being here today is to look at the contracts to review ITs.
Yes, this is something that due to the power failure we had a couple of months ago. Of course, I reported that to the insurance company, and the insurance company is... I've had several contacts with the adjuster for this particular claim. She suggested that it would be wise to have an independent third party come in and evaluate our current setup and configuration to try and either prevent it from recurring or ensure that we have sufficient protective devices, equipment in place that it would lessen the impact of it. So, there are two different agreements. One is from Exos IT, DPA, Sando. It is for $50,000. And the other one is from Impact, who theirs is about half the price, I think it's $25,000, so it's exactly half of it. So again, in the discussions with the insurance adjuster, she first asked if there was any hope of retrieving some of the lost data. And I said, you know, my conversations with Sean, I don't think that it's gone, and it's gone for good. But the other aspect of it is to have an independent party come in and take a look and make sure our CPUs, our backups, and all of those types of things are properly configured. Again, this was not a malware attack or a software failure. It's more looking at the hardware and the systems and the current setup. I asked Sean to take a look at both of them, since that's clearly not my area of expertise. And so I think Sean has taken a look.
Thank you. Sean Rand, Boone County IT. Yes, as Bob requested, I did review both contracts. Both contracts will fulfill the requirements of the insurance company with regards to the review. As Bob mentioned, the Impact contract is significantly less money. It's $25,000 less money. We have worked with both of these vendors multiple times on multiple projects over the last several years. I can tell you that we've had nothing but success with Impact and their projects. Everything's been on budget, everything's been on time, very good communication. We have not had that experience with Sando at all. Given, again, the fact that they are quite a bit more money and our past experience, our recommendation would be to go with the Impact contract and not the Sando contract. I do have, as the... The ARCO request was for $50,000. After doing the initial review of the incident and what recommendations we were able to come up with, which we have obviously sent to you guys as part of the after-action report, we've identified some different battery backup systems we'd like to... Some are older, some additional ones we'd like to purchase. I have a invoice from one of our main hardware vendors that I can provide, Kaylee, if you choose to utilize it for that, to remediate some of the issues from the incident, which would be another $25,000, which would cover the $50,000. Again, our recommendation would be to go with Impact and use the extra money to remediate going forward. And I feel that's a much better use of taxpayer dollars in this scenario.
So, and make sure I understand you on this, is that the other... The $25,000 to go through the whole process to recheck and check again on everything. But then, the hardware that we need to replace? The money's available there for that other $25,000 that's there, so it's a two-for-one deal with that?
Yes, sir.
Is what you're telling me?
Yes, sir.
Basically, okay. Any questions? Any questions?
Tim, sorry.
Tim?
Hey, one second, Tim. Tim, could you go ahead and say something?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, so, question. So at the last meeting, we approved the Sando contract subject to verification that meets the insurance needs. We just got verification that it meets in the insurance needs. So, I'm kind of confused why we're considering another vendor. I mean, I spent... We've been at this since, I don't know, since October. And it's been discussed at two meetings. I mean, I have not been contacted at all since the last meeting. So, it just looks awfully strange that you call in a meeting here, the last half hour of the last possible day to meet, and be doing this. I don't even know why we're here, meeting. We just got verification that we meet the condition that we voted on in the last meeting. To me, this meeting's over.
Well, in terms of the second contract, it's pretty common for the commissioners in any public agency when you're looking at something of this cost to get a second quote.
Did we get a second quote on the fuel station?
It was followed by state law and the bidding requirements.
Again, this... In my opinion, this meeting is over. We met the condition that we voted on in the last meeting. If you guys want to, you know, try and do what you're doing in the last half hour, again, I mean, this meeting didn't need to be more than about five minutes. You might have just called it at 3:55. I mean, this is ridiculous. I'm on vacation. I found out about this meeting on vacation. I haven't been contacted at all about any of this.
It was passed in the last...
We've been working on this for a month. It's been discussed more than just the last meeting.
It was passed the last meeting that after legal counsel's review of this contract, then it would be passed on to me to sign.
Correct, so...
I never signed it. I never signed the contract, period. I'm the only one...
We got the verification. We got the verification in the last meeting. Sign the contract today and let's be done with it.
I am the only one that has authority to sign that, period. Because that was passed in our last meeting.
Then sign it.
It's already been signed. Not by me.
Yeah, I signed a copy because it was just a formality. It was confirmed today. It was just a formality. I signed a copy, had it delivered to Debbie, because I didn't know what was going on. Since the last meeting, I was receiving emails that there wasn't enough time to review it. So, insurance was going on, so I was going to spearhead this thing in the last month. So, I signed a copy, gave it to Debbie, and asked her to hold on to it.
Bob, have you ever, since the last meeting, did you ever forward any part of that contract to me and give me the authority to sign that?
No, I didn't.
But I'll edit to review.
So now we need to decide what we're going to do, those two contracts.
Yeah, sign the contract. There really is no decision. We already made the decision. Sign the contract.
I don't understand why we want to spend $50,000 when we can spend $25,000.
We already voted on it. Clearly, there's got to be some difference between the two contracts. Otherwise, one wouldn't cost $25,000, the other would cost...
Can you go into any details on this between now and then?
Well, again, I'm not an expert on this. I defer to Sean. But there's a lot of... There appear to be a lot of things in the Sando contract that are not required for what the insurance company wants. They've got six hours of a kickoff meeting, 38 hours of weekly updates and progress reports, leadership business interviews, 20 hours. There seem to be a lot of padding in there that is not necessary for what the insurance company has requested.
Okay, well, we can scale it back. Contract can be scaled back.
We can only...
I mean, I haven't seen... There's been no communication with me since this started about what the insurance requirements are. I did my best to go to... I asked questions because it was nearing the end and there were... We had to figure out what ARCO funds were left and how they were going to be spent. So, I took it on. I called Whitestown and asked them who they use. And they came highly recommended. And they work for other municipalities as well. So, I don't understand what the... I mean, okay, if there's more in there than we need, fine, you can scale it back.
We can only deal with the contracts that are in front of us. We cannot make any changes to either one of those, correct?
Yeah, this was not a not-to-exceed. This was a flat fee.
It's a not-to... Right. It's a not-to-exceed. It's no different than drainage projects. So, some of the drainage projects we have are unit-priced contracts. They're going to change. This is no different.
That's your decision.
The contract with the other company has locked into $25,000 no matter what.
Correct.
With Sando, it's up to $50,000.
That's not what it says.
It is $50,000, period.
It is $50,000. It does not say not to exceed.
Okay. It stops at $50,000. It is $50,000 no matter what.
$50,000, the other one's $25,000.
I guess I don't understand why there's even a question. We voted, subject to it, meeting the needs of the insurance. That has been verified. Why are we even meeting today to consider something else? It doesn't make any sense. No reason to.
Other than we've got to decide which contract. Because we have two different ones here, and neither one are valid right now until they're signed.
Well, it doesn't sound like he would sign anything if he doesn't get to read it.
If we do not sign it today, then it's done. There's $50,000 that goes back to the feds. We're out of here.
Then whoever should sign it when he's read?
You cannot. He cannot sign that contract. I am the only one legally that can sign that contract and was passed in our meeting and it's in our minutes.
It was already passed in the last...
Go ahead, sign it. We've got the verification we agreed in the last meeting. As long as it meets the insurance needs, it was going to be executed. That was the only question coming out of the last meeting. The only one.
So, we're willing to pay twice as much just to sign that contract as what the other company...
How much money do you have to use?
I cannot support that. I will not sign that $50,000 contract.
So, you're going back on what you said in the last meeting?
We have another company that turned in their bid. And I think it makes sense for us to have evaluated that under the recommendations.
If we're going to do this, then we should be public bidding all projects. All projects. This A, we don't whatever... I don't even know why we went out and got another contract, got another quote. And it's not even fair to... Term all at the same time, it's just awfully convenient. It's half the amount. There's no transparency here. We had transparency at the last meeting. We had council vote on it. We had commissioners vote on it. Now we want to change, change that in the last half hour. How does that look to the public? This is absurd.
I purposely stayed clear of this because it's not a contract that I will be exercising. So, I'm supporting whatever you guys decide to do.
Support your vote on the last meeting?
I wouldn't even be here to vote on this if it didn't have to be done before the end of the year. I understand.
We don't need to vote on it. We got the verification we need. The contract just needs to be signed.
Legal counsel, is there anything wrong with what we've done here with this other contract coming in? Is there any legal issue to this at all, period?
You can...
What's wrong with it is how it looks to the public.
Exactly.
There's no transparency.
Exactly.
As I said before, it is common, if not standard, practice for commissioners and other bodies to obtain at least two quotes. This was the only one that came in as of your meeting last, when we voted on it. You've now got a second one.
And there was no time period put on that, that they had to be in by a certain date, certain time, or anything before that?
No, and this came... This one was sent to me last week, and I distributed it to all of you. So, everybody's had an opportunity to look at it and evaluate both of them.
But it came after the meeting, right, that we voted?
Correct.
Well, there you have it.
Just a question. How was the contract, the second contract obtained? Did it just come in the door, or was it solicited?
It was solicited, much like this one was.
With RFP?
I'm sorry?
With RFP?
No, no, no.
What does that word... Help me understand.
This Impact company had done some work for the county previously. So, county reached out to them and said, "Would you be interested?" I believe Max or someone else also reached out to a couple of other vendors, and they were not interested in doing this type of work. So, much like Sando, did they put together a proposal and send it?
Do we know who reached out to the county?
Yeah.
So, I didn't know about the Sando contract until I got the agenda from Kaylee the Thursday before the meeting. So, there simply wasn't enough time for me to go and get a full secondary quote. So, you know, I was looking... Again, we've worked with these vendors in the past. We do not have good history with Sando, and I was concerned that it would not be a good project. So therefore, I solicited a company that we've used in the past to do these services and had good working relationship with to see what they would come in at, which is where the secondary quote is.
Why was I not reached out to?
I don't know. Again, as soon as the meeting was over, I started working on the request. And then I gave the information to Bob.
So, was there...
The only other question I have, Jeff, is you said you would support whatever is decided. We already decided on it in the last meeting. If it's a one-one vote today, would you support it? It doesn't make any sense. None of this makes any sense.
I don't understand how it makes any sense to spend $50,000 when we can spend $25,000.
We were going to spend that on the last meeting, though, right? I mean, you guys were considering spending that on the last meeting.
We can change that at any point in time, and we're changing it today.
We approved... We not only considered it, we approved it. Subject to the insurance verification. We have the verification.
So, I don't even know why we would have been looking for a second contractor. Like, he would have even taken that upon himself to do that.
Because he was asked to...
I was concerned about the vendor. And again, an RFP was not...
If you were concerned about the vendor, why did you not reach out to me? It just all is very, very...
Right.
All I was looking to do was get a secondary quote. I thought it was overpriced. Again, I have experience with the vendor. I have no issue with having a third party come in here and evaluate our environment. We've already done that. We did it two years ago. We're fine doing it again. I just think we need to have the right vendor. Plus, with the cost savings, there are some things that we should be looking at doing to improve our environment, which we can then spend that extra $25,000 on. So, in my opinion, we're getting more bang for our buck with going with the other solution.
Because otherwise, if I understand you right, we go with Sando, spend $50,000 there, and then we've got to pull another $25,000 out of the budget.
Somewhere, because it's out of budget, it's out of your budget, correct.
So, we're going to spend $75,000 instead of $50,000.
Correct.
Oh, the end of the year is always fun.
Yeah, this is what the meeting... It didn't even need to happen. We didn't even need to have this meeting. We already have the approval. We got the verification. We're just going against what we already voted on for no reason. It all looks very strange, not transparent. Last half hour, the county's even open.
Tim, are you...
I recommend you just sign the contract. I recommend you just sign the contract. That's what we're reviewing.
I didn't want to talk over you. Can you read the motion that was made at the last meeting, Ken?
The motion that was made by you was to approve the contracts subject to legal counsel's review authorizing Donnie's sum on behalf of the board. And then, Tim, second.
And it was the specific contract and not the project?
It was signed.
So, we have no choice? We do have a choice.
We have a choice, but why are we...
Why are we having a choice?
If we have the verification, why are we... We're making sense.
The same question remains, though. Why are you so passionate about it, Tim? That, you know, if you have another option with less money?
Well, it is pretty clear. It was just discussed in the meeting that the scopes are not the same. If we don't need all that scope, we can cut it back.
So, what you're saying is we can cut their contract back right now to $25,000, and that's it? Without their approval or anything?
No, I'm saying that we approve it at $50,000. That's what we decided to do at the last meeting. If there are things in there that Sean doesn't feel are needed, then we can cut those back.
We're signing the contract for $50,000. There's no cutting it. It's done. It's $50,000, period. Am I correct on that?
That's the way the contract reads.
Well, so I can get them all settled.
You can serve... There's change orders to contracts. How do you hold on?
I have a low of the time. I saw it over at City last week.
There's no change contracts in that.
I mean, you could always... We could always submit revisions. And see if they accept them, they may or may not.
If they don't, it's still $50,000?
Yes.
If they do, it could come down to $40,000.
Come down to whatever. But we would need Sean to evaluate what those changes are. That's not my field, obviously. He's the IT expert.
I mean, I'll put forward a motion?
You can't.
If we think we need a motion to just confirm what we said we were going to do in the last meeting? But I don't think we need to do that. I think we just need to sign the contract.
Okay. Put forward your motion.
My motion is that we have Donnie sign the contract because we got verification that what we voted on in the last meeting has been satisfied. So, to meet the deadline for the ARCO funds, that we have Donnie formally sign the contract, simply confirming and authorizing what we did in the last meeting. The Sando contract.
The motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
It's now open for discussion.
Is there anything you wanted to add, Tim?
I will take some... I mean, it's been... I kind of feel like we need a dead horse here.
Timmy?
I mean, it's... I guess the only other thing... The only other thing I would say about the cost in changing the cost is, you know, if there's legitimate reasons to scale back the scope, that's fine. And if we're not happy with... With the... With what Sando comes back with? You know, we have the $50,000 in ARCO funds. There are options to increase and decrease contract amounts. We set it up that way on purpose because of the evil situation. We weren't sure... Where that was all going, and that finally got taken care of. So, there's options there. We're not sending money back to the feds. We set it up so there's plenty of options there. I wanted that done on purpose because of the evil situation. So... So, I don't think that's a legitimate reason to say... I mean, we've acknowledged there's scope differences. We set it up so that we can adjust amounts on contracts. I just think we should move forward with what we already heard at the last meeting. And not do these things in the last minute. There's no reason to.
Debbie, I have a question for you. It's set at $50,000. That cannot change, correct, if we sign that contract?
My question would be, does that IT assessment contract have equipment listed in it? Because I'm afraid if you switch contracts, the council approved the IT assessment, which to me is just kind of a overview of what's being done. That other $25,000 wasn't approved for equipment. And that's where I'm going to question it.
But as far...
But I don't know what the contract says.
But as far as the Sando contract, that cannot increase?
No.
It can decrease.
I mean, they can increase it if we both work. We have... If you sign it, we have a signed contract for $50,000. We wouldn't pay any more than what the contract says.
Right, yeah. I just want to make sure I was clear on that. And if they, excuse me, decrease it, that money goes away. Because we can't do anything else with that money because it's after the first of the year.
Well, you can because in both the council and, I think, your last meeting or the meeting before that, you both boards agreed that you would put it towards road materials. Or road conversion materials or something.
Okay, but, good point, I, yeah, that is, that is correct. I just wanted to make sure that if they came back and did it for forty-five thousand, we got five thousand left over.
And I think they did that with Englewood, but it kinda was, you can use it for less than that.
But that, but right now, it, that is locked into a maximum of fifty thousand. It can become less, if, if they do that. But it is locked at fifty thousand if we sign that contract right now. Okay, thank you. Excuse me. All right, any further discussion on this?
It just doesn't make any sense to me if that twenty-five thousand dollars could then be redirected to road maintenance, why we would pay twice as much for the same thing?
Well, it's not the same thing.
Well-
I mean, Bob already, Bob already read through a few items that, uh, evidently are in Sondi's that aren't in Impact's. I'm sure there's others.
So, I guess that's the question I would have, Tim, is why would, why would we have that in there? If it was above and beyond what the insurance company was requiring?
I don't know, I mean, what, I, I just asked for a quote on an IT assessment, that's what they gave us. You know, I don't, I'm not looting in this stuff either.
Yeah, I, I got it.
But...
Any further discussion?
There's a motion on the floor.
Then we'll take it to a vote. Excuse me. All those in favor of the fifty thousand dollar contract with Sando, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, aye? Aye.
So, um, we have an interesting situation. Because we have two vendors, and we have a timeframe. And, uh, is it possible to give Tim the opportunity to renegotiate with Sando by, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Making both contracts subject to, and approving?
I'm pretty sure Debbie has probably-
After the signed contract mention?
As of today, you have to have it.
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
Well, tomorrow technically.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
But we're closed, obviously, or the county's closed. So, and it's federal government requirement, it has to be under contract, so I don't know how we would do that. I mean, I suppose if we can get a signed contract tomorrow, I mean, they could always deliver in my office, I'm open, but, uh-
Some counties are open, so it's not like it's a across-the-board holiday for all counties, so you could do-
If, if we have a signed contract, it must be in your office tomorrow. So can't, can't just-
Everything has to be signed and secured by tomorrow, cause the portal will open up on January second, and anything dated-
Dated different.
After January one.
So, it's not just as simple as handing it to you and say, yeah, I'll take care of that on Thursday or Friday, it has to be done tomorrow. No matter what.
Would it be okay if they dropped it off at my office, and I bring it to you on Thursday?
Can I say something? I've been saying it from my seat, but can I say something?
Aye, it's up to him.
Yes, please do. You have to come up here, state your name.
Jody Stewart. I questioned you earlier in a different meeting about these contracts that show up, and they show up minutes before a meeting. So, I, I agree with Tim. This is not being transparent with your community. And the fact that we have a fifty thousand dollar contract that we're looking at, that seems to list everything, and maybe things that we don't need, that we could scale back, I wonder, Impact, what are things that they are gonna add that are not in their contract right now, that they're gonna make change orders for, that you guys are gonna have, that we're gonna be responsible for coming up with that money after the fact? Because I've seen that happen already over at the city council meetings with the taxpayers' money.
This is, this is, these are both flat fee contracts, and they cannot be changed without those sites' approval.
Okay.
Okay, so, starting there, secondly, the, both the Impact and the Sando contracts were distributed to the commissioners as soon as I received. So, so Mr. Byer, Mr. Wolf, and Mr. Lawson all received these last week.
Okay.
So they've had plenty of opportunity to look at them. So the Sando contract, interestingly enough, um, nobody saw that until the, the agenda came out. I didn't even see it before the meeting, it was never sent to me.
Okay, so, um, and so Tim was responsible for getting that contract?
Yes, and I never saw it before the meeting.
And you never saw it before the meeting, and now he's saying that somebody else got this Impact contract, and he has not seen it?
He's seen it, I, I emailed it to him last week.
But he's on vacation, so he's saying he hasn't had time to look over it. So we're down to the end of the wire here, and we've already had a meeting that discussed one contract, and you guys were all on board with it, until this new contract came in. Um, so-
I'm not saying-
It is kind of suspicious how you guys are operating here, to the community. Because we are seeing this throughout the entire lead project.
So, I guess my question would be, why did we only give one to start with?
I don't know. Did you advertise it?
No, we don't advertise service agreements.
Okay, so why are we looking at a contract for this?
Because we typically, well, first of all, you would always have a contract for it. For service agreements, we don't advertise it, nor are you required to.
Okay.
And so, when we get quotes from an engineer, for instance, for a project, we'd always go out and ask for a second, sometimes a third. It's good practice, don't you think?
Yeah.
And we didn't have that opportunity on this one.
But we need a contract for something, right? Because we had a problem?
Yeah.
So we're rushing it, and we had one contract that came in, and we were considering it, until now we have a new contract that disappeared. So, yeah, that is kind of suspicious.
It didn't just appear. Like I said, these, both contracts were sent to the commissioners last week for review.
No, we had one contract before the meeting, which was Sando, correct?
Yes, which I never saw.
And you never saw that, that you've had time to review that?
I have now.
Yes.
I didn't have time before the meeting, cause it was never sent to me.
You know, and that seems to be the issue with meetings around here, is that, that things get set out like a day before meetings, and then people are supposed, the people that we vote in that are working for us are supposed to be able to look at that stuff, and they are working for us, and they are supposed to be deciding those things.
Yes.
That's a problem then, isn't it? And it's a problem that we have a new contract now, after we've already approved another contract based on certain conditions. So do you see how the public, how the public can see this as not being very transparent?
You had mentioned something else when you came up here, that we open contracts or bids at meetings, whether it's range board or a commissioner's meeting. Those cannot be opened unless it's in public, they're dated, timed, delivered. So, when you're asking why we're doing that, it's the law. Those cannot be opened, and they can only be opened by legal counsel, none of the rest of us.
I understand that. I asked my question last time, because I noticed that some of those contracts came in the same day, and within like ten minutes before the meeting was-
They're on a time period.
Those are bids.
Those are bids.
Those are bids.
And then those are turned back over to the highway department to reevaluate all of those, to make sure they, they've, they've hit all of the standards. Then they come back to us and make their recommendation on who to go with.
Correct, that this is not a bid, right? This was a contract that you guys decided last week, or the last meeting, based on contingencies, that it would be approved. And now we sit here, and we have a new contract in front of us, that's less money. Isn't that funny how that shows up?
It's all public information, once it's in this meeting, it is public information, period.
I understand that, but you have to look at how it looks to us.
So saving money is not important?
Not if it's like this. If we are gonna be rushed to vote something through for money that is sitting there that you guys want, not if it's like this. It does not look good to your public.
Just to, if I may, just to clarify a couple things for, uh, Ms. Stewart. It was mentioned earlier that Max was seeking some quotes, that's true, that was being done like back in November, and it didn't seem like anybody was interested, so that's why I reached out to Whiteston. And Whiteston gave me a name, and that's what we voted on, you know, it was discussed as part of the ARPA funds. Votes that we had in December, early December, both, both commissioner meeting, then council, and then at the December sixteenth meeting, we voted to, uh, approve the Sando contract, just su- subject to it verifying the needs of the insurance. Then the Impact proposal came in, I think Friday at that meeting. Which was the day I was leaving on vacation. And then I found out on Monday that there was this special commissioners meeting being called. So that's the timeline.
I guess I would just add, again, I have zero issue with having a third party come in, okay? I did not know ahead of time that we were even looking, or I would have expressed my concern at that time, all right? Again, I found out about the meeting when we got, when I got the agenda to put on the website from Kaylee the Thursday before the meeting. Obviously, there's not enough time to get a, a meeting set up. After the meeting was over, I felt it was my responsibility as the IT director to do our due diligence like we would any other project, get additional quotes. Again, I was also concerned giving our past history with that particular vendor, that it was overpriced, and we would not get our money's worth. So I contacted another vendor we have used in the past. We had that meeting on Thursday of last week. I got, I had, they rushed through, got everything set up for us, got, I got the quote, I immediately sent it to Bob, who then immediately passed it on. So the only reason that this is coming in from the IT department at the last minute is because we didn't know about it ahead of time either. If we had, we could've had additional discussions and, and gone a different direction. But I did not know you guys were looking back in November at, uh, for this at all.
So as we talked earlier-
I, I'm, I'm-
I would like to-
I'm really happy to address that.
Hang on, he's talking, I'm talking.
The Sando proposal is very detailed. It lays out how many hours they are, uh, spending on the project. It lays out an hourly rate, and I did the math, I divided the fifty thousand, divided by the hours they were gonna spend. It did not look to me, look, I know what these professional, it's, it's different, but I know what these professional, uh, services cost. I'm in that business. It, their hourly rate is a reasonable rate. So again, I go back to, if the scope is more than what is needed, then we can cut that back. There's no reason we can't cut that back. And I don't know why, uh, Sando wouldn't agree to cut it, I mean, it's, it's all spelled out in their proposal. It's short of, you know, quite numerous dimes and nickels here and there. It's pretty clear that if we cut back certain, um, tasks, they have hours assigned, there's an hourly rate. It's pretty cut and dry with it, what that cost is one of the-
So one of the things that we mentioned earlier is that Tim can call Sando right now, have them bring in a separate bid, it has to be in by noon tomorrow, and then we can decide whether to go ahead and sign that contract or not sign it. And if it's not done by noon tomorrow, then it's not being done at all. Period.
It's all in there.
Pretty much, I mean-
That's right, I, I don't, I don't wanna push it to four o'clock or five o'clock tomorrow, Debbie, I'm trying to get things done.
Yeah, I'm not working, I'm not done.
Well, just as long as it gets, gets-
You're on your own timeline tomorrow.
Well, but it needs to get to you, to your office. I mean, or, or even if it's-
My office. Your office.
As long as it's to his office, then we're okay. That's why, I, I, I guess I misunderstood you earlier, I thought it had to be in your hands, in your office and filed. As long as he has it, okay, thank you, that, that helps a little bit more, cause like I said, I was not wanting to call you at, at four o'clock and say, hey, here's the papers. You want me to bring them to your house, you wanna come in here, so, thank you. All right. So that's the, that's the only alternative.
And that's, that's the whole reason behind the urgency in this, is the federal government requires that we have a signed contract by the end of the year before, otherwise we can't use these funds for it, and we have to send it back. Reason, December thirty-first. Both parties have to have an executed contract in place, otherwise the money goes back to the feds.
And so we've decided on an IT contract for that, right? It sounds like, and-
Commissioners and council have.
Hmm?
The commissioners and the council have both decided that, yes.
The commissioners and the council have decided on an IT contract to use that money on an IT contract, and when was that decided?
November.
November?
It's the November council.
November.
At the November council meeting, and then we have an IT manager, right? You were an IT manager or director, and you had no idea that they were considering this until the day before the meeting? Hmm, that seems odd, don't you think? There's kind of a breakdown in communication, it sounds like, because you didn't have a chance to read the Sando contract, and here we have an IT man on cap, that we pay for, who had no idea that our council was even looking at an IT contract. Seems strange, doesn't it? And now we have a new contract that's coming into play.
So Tim, do you wanna get ahold of Sando and see what they can have us by noon tomorrow?
Is Tim on vacation?
That's our only alternative right now.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna throw a motion out there, you gotta do with it what you want.
I mean, really? Is, is Tim on vacation?
That's what he said.
You're on vacation? You've already done your job?
I am.
So why are you, why are you, this is ridiculous.
I, why are we judging whether he's on vacation, or was I on vacation today and I came in to do this? Do we need to get that, do we need to get that out into this too?
No, what I'm saying is that we're on a deadline right now, one day, and he's on vacation, and you expect him to call these people, and he's already put the contract into motion and had it in front of you guys, you guys already read it, you voted on it last time, and now we have something new in front of us that's throwing everything off. Does it seem right?
I've heard you. Jeff?
I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that the money be released to road projects and, uh, this be revisited, uh, as an RFP or a, not an RFP, but a, a bid with a third vendor, uh, after the first year.
So Jeff's motion is to take the fifty thousand dollars and put it towards road projects, and then after the first of the year, we reevaluate contracts for the same project, for the IT project in January.
That's the way I heard it.
I'll second that motion.
All right, any further discussion on it? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, it goes to road projects.
Um, and then Kaylee asked if you could renew the licenses for Monday.com before the end of the year.
I'll move to renew the Monday.com license.
Licenses. Did you hear that too? Did you hear that, Tim?
I did. So, um, just a question. So, what, what are the costs? What is it?
It's, it's the project management software being used for the, the Justice Center till the end of the project.
Okay. So, Max uses it?
Yeah, and, and they can actually use it for other, other projects as well.
I think he's using it on the courthouse windows.
Six thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Six thousand two hundred and forty dollars?
For the year?
Yes.
Yes. And that's for ten, ten licenses.
Okay, it's been moved to second. All those in favor, aye? Aye. And that's it. We have nothing else?
I'm sorry?
Need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, aye? Aye.